Good evening. At this time, I'd like to tell the other district here at School District here with Board Meeting of Education, the order for May. At this time, would you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jim, is the meeting properly announced?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Some. I'll second.
Motion, thank you, Joanna, second by Jim to adopt the agenda. There's a discussion. Here you now, start this vote with Jeff.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Lemon?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
And my vote is just passes by zero. No one signed up for public comment, so we'll move on. Students of Month for April. Ms. Buna will be assisting tonight with that. Parents, if we have room up here, when your child comes up, please come up, take a better picture as you want. We encourage that. And we're going to start with Russia Creek.
Come on up here, come on honey. Go ahead. You stand right in front. He's always dressed so nice. Well, this is Avery Christensen. She is in Mrs. Tubby's kindergarten class out of Russia Creek. And I got a little something that your classmates wrote and what the teacher says about you, so here we go. I'm happy to nominate Avery Anne Christensen for Russia Creek Student of the Month. Avery is a great student. She loves her family and shares things about them every day. She likes to dance and sing and play with other girls in the class. It's an all-girls class, by the way. She has grown as a student this year in every area. She also works hard at improving her reading, writing, and math. Awesome. Her friends say she's a nice friend. She wears pretty clothes every day. She has a very nice voice. I like when she sings. She likes to dance. She likes to play with us every set. Congratulations Avery as Student of the Month for Russia Creek for the month of April. Here's ice cream today. Your medal for Student of the Month. Now you get to turn to Craig and get a shot. With four memories. Congratulations Avery.
Grand Marsh.
Two for one. Alright. Ashton, come on, I saw, there he is, right in the front row. Mom and dad are here tonight, so that's good. Come on up here. This is Ashton Curran. He is our Student of the Month for April. He comes from Mrs. Durst's 3rd grade class down in Grand Marsh. Lots of good things to say about you. She wrote and wanted to say that it's a pleasure to nominate Ashton for Student of the Month. Ashton comes to school every day with the excitement to learn. And when I say every day, because he has perfect attendance so far this year. So that's awesome. And I'm impressed with Ashton's imagination in his writing and his neat handwriting. He sets a positive example in the areas of empathy. He goes out of his way to make sure that all his students and his friends are taken care of in the class. I hope he takes on the leadership like that in 4th grade. The Student of the Month for April at Grand Marsh, Ashton Curran. I need your certificate. Stay right there. Do not, right, move. She won't bite.
And I won't kiss you.
Good job. Oh, Ashton, come on over and get a pic too.
Adam's Friendship Area.
Alright, so Zoe here. When I first met Zoe at the start of the school year, this funky little red hat, I thought, oh, she's gonna give me a run for my money. But the improvement that she has made from the start of the year until now is like a whole 360. She has brought up her reading grade, her reading level, over a full grade level. She works super hard and takes pride in her work, which is a big thing for her. Do you remember when you took the math test and you were like, oh, I'm not happy with this? And then you retook it and it took you like an hour or more to do? And you scored so much better. So she really works hard now. And I love her sensitivity. She makes me smile a lot. Do you remember that time when we were testing and stuff was going wrong with all the computers and what you did? All of a sudden, here's Zoe. As you can tell, he's getting totally frustrated. And next thing you know, I have Zoe just sneaking up by me. She slips me a little piece of paper, says, "I need this later." And I open up the paper and inside is her little stress rock and a note that says, "I think you need this money." She likes to make my day and cheer me up. She knows when I need it. And I totally appreciate her. So I present to you Zoe Mometer, Student of the Month. Congratulations. Okay, and then you can go back in.
Real school.
Well Greg, this is Eric Delacalle. He is a 6th grader at the middle school and he is an outstanding student. He works very hard and he truly is a role model for others because he is truly, I mean, one of the most kind, generous, and just sincere children that I know. So here's what his teachers had to say about him. Eric is an awesome kid. He is a hard worker every day. He never gives up and he loves a challenge. He has a wonderful sense of humor and he brightens up our class. I love how happy he is. And not a lot gets him down. Eric is a wonderful addition to any classroom. He works to do the right things and is always willing to help others. Eric strives to do his best. When he's given suggestions on how to do better, he is open to those suggestions and he wants to grow in his learning. Eric is kind to his peers, offering both help and support. He has a smile on his face that will encourage peers to do their best. He doesn't draw attention to himself. Pointing out how he's helped someone is just part of his nature. He makes the classroom a nicer place for both his teachers and his fellow students. This is Eric Delacalle and he is a wonderful student at our middle school.
For gift card.
Picture. Your mind's over there, you gotta put your mind. Kevin, our H school here.
Yep. So Hannah David is the Student of the Month. She says she smells bad, but when I told her about the award, she smelled like gasoline that day. Because she's taking apart an engine, so. She was nominated this month by two teachers actually. Mr. Webler, so he'll come up in a second, and Ms. Baumgart, who is your art teacher, who talked about Hannah's creativity. She represented the high school at the Regal Arts Classic and at the SEC Art Show. So great artist as well, so I'll ask Mr. Webler as the team instructor to come up.
Alright, Hannah David, I could speak a lot about her determination and drive, but I'll let her close speak for me. What you see here is, you know, 90 minutes of hardcore soccer and not giving up in the middle of the field. And she has the same approach in our class. She's part of our team at Academy. She was a pre-engineering technology academy here that we started a few years back at the high school. She is our team captain in soccer and she's also the lead student in our academy, taking every opportunity that she can, but also not forgetting about others in the classroom and always extending a hand. She's very creative of art and in arts in general, but you put an engine in front of her and if she doesn't know it, she'll figure it out. Put something else in front of her, a robot, some soldering, she will not, you know, take a step back. She will figure out a way to fix it, bring everyone else along need be, the same way she's on the field with other girls as well in the classroom. So I'm just super proud to be up here with her and the great work that she's been doing in our class.
Okay, at this time, we'd like the award winners to go out in the hallway and to get their picture taken for the newspaper. Families, you can leave at this time, you can stay for regular board meeting, whatever you wish, but make sure your shoe gets out there for the president. But I think we're gonna hold off for a while. You should all put your hands up. Kevin, the upper board. Alright, I'm going to assume these people clear. Alright.
I've got X rays.
You got X rays? Alright, as they get their picture taken in the hallway, we usually like Kevin do his Student of Month report. Is this your last one, Kevin?
Yeah, hopefully.
We don't really call you back, Kevin. Okay, so the floor is Kevin's.
Alright. Alright, so for all elementarys, you'll begin your benchmark testing at the end. June versus 38th quarter end, June 7th, the last expo. For EFE Friday, May 18th, science expo in the Heather Ethan Room. May 25th, Morley Program at 9:30 AM. May 30th, the third will go to point base. 5K first and second grade of Russia Creek are coming to spend time, getting to know the other students and get a tour. In first, during 5th grade, 3rd to 5th grade, graders will meet the. Who met the reading requirements will be attending the Timber Rattlers Gate and high school seniors will be over around 11:00 AM for our graduation walk. June 6th, 2nd and 3rd, and 4th graders coming to Russia Creek to enjoy end of year celebration and have lunch. And also the 4K. Grand Marsh, 3rd graders are going to the Quodex one in Montello Tuesday, May 15th. Kindergarten to 3rd graders are coming to Tommy, Bartlett, Joe, June 1st in the morning. Russia Creek students have a busy month. May 15th, February is at the Snow Day at McBowen House. Our main PBIS celebration is going to Tommy, Bartlett, May. The thing, I don't know. May 3rd reverse in the AM. May 18th, Russia Creek will see the contents of a Time Castle and have an open house celebration on Sunday, May 20th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. All School Carnival Day is Friday, May 25th, 1:00 to 3:00 PM. As for middle school this week is our spring sports also coming to an end and students at the middle school finished taking their spring benchmark assessment in reading and math. This Tuesday, our middle school band will be participating in the exchange concert with Boston Middle School. This concert has many traditions over 25 years and Mr. Coolness and, sorry about, sorry if I butchered the name, it's Mr. Ping, the early classroom. But our excited team one is Lesning and is Inns. Sorry about the pronunciation, the Boston grand teacher. This began a long time ago, happened to be at a middle school. We will continue to prepare the next year and join visits and tours from the incoming 5th and 6th grade classrooms. And as for high school, spring sports are wrapping up and playoffs again soon. So our ship in Sunday is May 16th at 6:00 PM. Will begin at the Allen Friendship Education Foundation Academy Hall, May 19th. And National Art Society banquet is on May 31st in the Fine Arts Center. 2018 graduation be held on June 2nd at 2:00 PM in the AF High School gym. That's about it.
I had to say from school's type of name, so I'll give you a name. First of all, the office, our two new school board members actually did their oath in April, but I'd like to welcome Kevin Mason and Tony Hamilton to the board. He's serving for three years. Thank you guys for stepping up. Alright, at this time, we'll go select a CISA 5 representative. I've done it for the last 17 years, I'd like to continue. I'm actually up for reelection Thursday night, so we'll know if we'll still have a CISA 5 rep. It's actually the district's position. If I win the election on Thursday, or if one of us win the election on Thursday, it's actually the district's position. So if I would ever leave or if somebody else would want to do it, it's actually, like I said, the district's position, so.
So I moved in on a receipt in 2018, I think it's a recent representative.
I'll second.
Is there any other nominees? Any other nominees? Any other nominees? Brenda nominated, moved to nominate Rick Pease as a 2018-2019 CISA 5 representative. Seconded by Joanne. Discussion? Here you now, start this vote with Kathy.
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Lemon?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And my vote is just passes by zero. Thank you. Does it make the official newspaper?
I move to designate the Adams Friendship Times reporter as the district's official newspaper for the 2018-19 school year.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jeff? Forced me out of Jim, second by Jeff to move to designate the Adams Friendship Times reporter as the district's official newspaper for 2018-2019. Discussion? Here you now, start this vote with Joanne?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Lemon?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
My vote is yes, passes by zero. Designation of official district depositories?
I move to designate the following as official depositories of the Adams Friendship Area School District. BMO Harris Bank, Grand Mar State Bank, Royal Bank, and Associated Bank.
I have a second there.
Jim? Joanne moved to designate the following as official depository of the Adams Friendship Area School District. BMO Harris Bank, Grand Mar State Bank, Royal Bank, and Associated Bank. It was seconded by Jim. Discussion? Here you now, we'll start this vote with Ron.
Yes.
Lemon?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
And my vote is just passes by zero. Does it make the official radio station?
I move to designate WCWI Radio as the official radio station of the Adams Friendship Area School District.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Joanne? Designation of official radio station was designated by Kathy, seconded by Joanne. Moved to designate WCWI Radio as the official radio station of the Friendship Area School District. Discussion? Here you now, we'll start this vote with Ron.
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
My vote is just passes by zero. Consideration of German to close section 19.851C. Is there a motion? Consideration of German to close section, section 19.851C. Consideration to close section of section 19.851C. No motion, we'll go on. Motion for a consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, is that right?
Is there a second?
No second.
Joanne? Forced me out of Jim, seconded by Joanne to approve the consent agenda. Please, I'm terrible at last names. Contracts Middle School, Brianna Orson?
Orson.
Orson? Maybe I said that, here we please. The quarter Raleigh, Stacy for middle school special education. For purchasing, receiving, nutritional, service administrative assistant, Stacy McMahonis. Food service position Suzanne Countryman, Diane Dezormo, and Patricia Breen. Middle school art Laura Duvall, oh, these are education, middle school art Laura Duvall, high school special Ed Nelson. Overnight trips, our educators riding conference, and then of course, we're gonna have the minutes from April 9th, Regular Board of Education meeting, April 17th, Special Board of Education meeting, April 19th, Special Board of Education meeting. Here you now, we'll start this vote with Ken.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Lemon?
Yes.
And I have to abstain. 801 extension. With that, we'll go to news reporting, social media report.
If the board recalls, early on in the school year, we chose a vendor to help us with their social media, with our Facebook page, our Twitter account, Instagram, and I felt. That's alright. I felt it was gonna be wise in the month of May to kind of allow the owners of this business to speak with the board and give us about a five to 10 minutes of overview of what this vendor does to the district of deposits that they bring.
Hello?
Hey, can you hear me?
I can.
Are you ready for me yet or not?
Yes.
Alright, so we're ready. We are ready for you Andrea, just take it away.
Okay, does everybody can hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Is, is, is there a woman named Kathy joining who's maybe on your phone or on our computer?
Yes, and Brenda too probably.
Yeah.
Okay, well I'm excited to give you a quick update. I know you've got busy agenda, so I don't want to take too much of your time. But we wanted to kind of break in and give you a little update to the social media and some of the facts that go on and give you an opportunity to ask any questions. And I thought that, so if you can't hear me while I'm going, then don't be afraid. If you're afraid of now, write down your questions, then we'll make sure to, uh, have some discussion at the end. Um, so social media is all about celebrating your school once every other time. And it was very fun to, uh, get to do that with all the different things happening at school all the time. I need to give you some feedback to come and join and some time to be there. I just put you, oh, I said it all, I was just gonna, you know, Josh, I'll be lying, but, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, um, since we started, um, I guess back to this fall, um, we have seen a 43% growth in your Facebook fans. That's an awesome growth, um, you know, a little over 1,100 fans. So I guess just last Monday, we were at 16, 19, hoping to see what we are, what we are at exactly today. Um, but huge growth, exceptions to 20, just hearing all the things that you guys are doing day in and day out throughout the school. Uh, plus, you know, uh, Lauren's working behind the scenes to make sure we get people invited to your page. And that certainly helps us grow as well. Um, and it's very, we speak on Facebook and a lot of times I talk about Facebook the most, because Facebook's kind of the most popular. When you average it out, every week will be seen almost 6,000 out with, with the awesome folks and, you know, information that's going out on your school, about your school. Yeah, great, so we had peaked up over 13,000, um, you know, down a little bit, but that average is right there around that 6,000 mark. And that's a very good number. Um, we've seen a little bit of a deep peak after Facebook meeting, algorithm changes, um, but we're still getting great reach. Um, and your community is fully enjoying, you know, everything that you're up to. Um, now Twitter, I'm not sure if any of you guys know Twitter, um, there's only 38 followers right now, if you're gonna see that in the middle. But we are using this channel, um, we always use that, and I said, we are Adams Friendship and we're sharing some of the posts that we're sharing out on our Facebook page. Uh, and then on our Instagram page, we have over 100 followers. Uh, a lot of students and young adults, um, and even people my age, I guess, long guys that are on Instagram. And so that is another great place to celebrate, you know, your students. Uh, we love to really highlight middle school and school students. And so this is nice, many folks on the, your students, your 2,018 academic top, you know, top 10 students. And with their 25 flights, um, just a nice way to again, just hear the word and all the, all the great things happening. Um, we do a lot of comparisons with other schools, we're all competitive. And so, um, this is just, you know, there's so many schools are bigger than you, Reeseburg, um, Cam, I might be about to say, but you guys just got to know, you guys still thrive one on. But you're doing well with the amount of followers in the search volume there, you can see the amount of posts you have in the last week. And I took through this snapshot just earlier today. That's 20, and then, um, easy. The engagement is at 649, which is a really good number. When you look at Hillsborough and Wanty Lock, uh, we're much higher than them. And each number is telling us how many people are liking, commenting, and sharing your posts. So we have an engaged community that really, you know, following all the great things, um, going on. Um, I'm gonna discuss some more things that we'll get a chance to talk. I always love to hear from you guys, you know, some of the feedback that you bring in. Um, just highly looking at the top things that we've been hearing, um, this is a fun couple pictures that we shared. Kind of a reminder to each of you that if you're on Facebook, and I'm sure we all are on Facebook. The page helps our posts be seen by more people. You can see down here in the bottom, it says 890 people were reached. Every time somebody hits the like button or comments, and they say, oh my gosh, this is so cool, or way to go, um, or they hit the share button. That helps tell Facebook that this is an important story and that Facebook should show it to more people. So I just want to encourage each of you that the more you like, comment, and share, the better. And just so you know, they're not all created equal. So a like is kind of worth, it's like worth one point. A comment is worth seven points. And a share is worth 14 points. So if 14 points aren't a whole when you hit the share button, so please, you know, if the school board member, anybody else who got the shoot tonight, hit that share button, considering all of our glory seeking that we want to pull. Um, I think just some of the top, and I just, we can't stand enough about, you know, we can't stand enough about Mary Jo. Lauren worked so closely with them. And, um, you know, Kim, you just had such a great strategy going into the whole referendum of getting the information out. Uh, and we're very calm and collected. Um, you know, sometimes we can get interesting things and interesting feedback, um, and it kind of all played itself out really well. Um, like this video that was just a simple video, I'll encourage them to get informed. It's over 1,100 people, it had 17 shares, so that was really helpful. Um, then we had, uh, some other referendum results that were shared, that would reach, you know, almost 3,000 people when you guys actually pass. So that was great. Um, and the, that was shared 21 times, got six comments, so that was really. Um, and the, that was shared twenty-one times, got six comments, so that was really powerful. Um, we got some kind of bad picture, your, um, clothing down at school, and so Lauren, all this month, was actually sharing out some go-bout birthday pictures, and just one ended up, what, at the time that I took this snapshot, it had reached over twenty-four hundred people, and had a bunch of shares, so I think it's powerful to be able to come up, however, the day we're, we're also trying to help promote the, um, event on May twentieth as well, so that we can get people there. Um, and then, right, um, we also got some job posting, and we had some great visibility on this one, you know, a few technical difficulties that first of all, Lauren posted this, but then we got the, the blue dog stuff, and if we took it for thirty-one hundred, so I'm not sure if you've gotten awesome, um, applicants, all of these, those you have, um, that's another great view of our social media pages, which will really get those things out there , so it's been fun. Um, and then, uh, you know, just like posts like this, it was, um, teacher appreciation piece, and so the share also motivational posts, uh, it was, we love you, it's very mad, we have thirteen shares, which was great as well. Um, and a quick recap, Mary Jo, she is so awesome to work with, um, we are, we love the staff teachers, like, your community loves to know more about your staff, we just, um, I'm not sure if you're familiar with her, and she's, but you can give a shout out to your staff, I know they're busy, um, but we just need a few more of those, and then, you know, we're getting really great content, uh, we can thank you a little bit more from the high school, some stuff from really typically kind of running too with some of our schools, you thank you at the Moses Community School, the parents are so busy, we're nothing doing, um, and so that would give us a couple, um, a couple of notes. Um, and if you need to go back to anything, and answer any and all questions that you guys bring up.
Questions?
Um, what do you see as, uh, the future for this Facebook page? Do you see expansion, uh, what are the plans?
Um, yeah, well, I mean, obviously, our goal, we've been doing social media for most, for four years, and so we're always hoping and working on kind of the cutting edge of what's really working well for school. Um, I think it's gonna continue to grow, you know, we, of course, Facebook has been in the news a lot in the last few months, over some privacy things, and, you know, as any of you are Facebook users, you know that, if you start looking at, you know, buying that new fish symbol, all of a sudden, you know, Facebook keeps showing up with those ads, the fishing boat, so, uh, we kind of know they're paying attention, but we're doing it in the right way, uh, we're still getting really significant reach, and so I think the, the thing is, is, um, you know, we just wanted to continue to use social media as a way to communicate out all the great things that are happening inside and outside the classroom, um, it's going into the summer home town, so I know Lauren has worked with Mary Jo and the staff, to make sure we still get plenty of, um, plenty of stories out there, um, videos do really well on Facebook, so, um, we'll just continue to, um, look at what kind of stories we can tell, and then make sure that we're getting those out there.
Is there any board questions? Thank you very much for your time tonight.
You bet, uh, yeah, and just, just overall, Kim, um, you know, for any of you haven't gotten their feedback, I mean, how is your community responding to you there, is there all, um, talking about the increased social media presence?
Yes, we've received a lot of compliments, as far as, uh, it's nice to have a window into the classroom on a consistent basis.
Yeah, that's a big one for me, I have six kids, and so they don't tell me what they do at school, but when I can see them for myself, I know. Um, just in closing, if you have any concerns or things, we are always open, um, we wanna serve you to the best of our ability, um, and that open access communication goes a long way, so if you have stories that, you know, aren't being out there, that need to be, you know, where's your partner in this, and so, um, we're always willing to listen and raise stories, um, and, and just do the best we can for your school, so thank you for letting us be a part of your school.
Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye, guys.
Andrea Davis.
Um, I just have a question, is there a person that directs this? Okay.
There is a, oh, I forget what the title is, but there is one person, and she will manage probably three different positions, and so we have everything, our staff has her email direct, we, we give her a picture, and a little write-up about it, she puts a presentation to it, as far as making it, uh, at the professional level, and then kicks it out to everyone.
Um, I guess my question was, in each of our schools, is there a person that sort of spurs this, um, encouraging, so it's just up to the individual teachers to do that?
It is, it is.
Okay, moving on, PBIS report.
I'm Crystal Holmes, I'm the grant coordinator for the district, and I also serve as the external coordinator for PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. Let's flip to the next slide, Andrea. So what you see here is our systemic approach, um, many times when you hear PBIS, you're gonna see a traditional triangle, we use this model to represent all students at our district, so we're going to see students that might have special needs on the spectrum, as well as students who might be advanced academically. Some of the things that are important to pay attention to is that this is not just social emotional for this system, it is also academic, so there is an RTI, um, position within this system as well. We feel that this representation provides a little more balance for our students, about eighty percent of our students should fall within that green area, so that's something that every student would receive in our district. What you see in that yellow area would be a less amount of students, so you would have, um, maybe some group work that would fall in that area, and then the red area would be even fewer students, those few students that need that extra level of support. This is a little difficult to read from here, but what you can see on this slide is some of the areas that we cover under here, um, we've talked a lot to the school board this year about the different programs that we have in our school, so I'm just gonna roughly go over some of the things you might see. So if you hear us refer to tier one, that's gonna be the green area that you're looking at, you might see curriculum implemented in this area given to all students, some things such as our positive action lessons, um, science suicide curriculum that we deliver to students, we also have second step that is delivered classroom level to all students, positive action runs a substance abuse curriculum, and we also have a bullying curriculum that falls underneath this level. Tier two services can be something like check-in, check-out, um, I'm not gonna go into detail about that, these ladies will talk to you about it in a little bit, we also have a state school ambassadors that falls in this, this area, um, expect respect, and you will also see some support groups that fall in this area, so students who may not need that intensive support, but they're able to do well with that group type of setting, we have groups running such as anxiety groups, um, we have some healthy relationship groups, and grief support groups that are running, as well as team parenting groups. And then that tier three area is going to be, um, our school people services department, so those students that need that one-on-one attention, we have a lot of students that are accessing services there, they also are being connected to integrated behavioral health providers there, so those are the therapists that we are bringing into our district. So we are going to talk to you about this system based on each tier, um, these ladies are gonna help me with it because they are in the schools doing this every day. The schools right now that are in tier one, so AFE is still in tier one, the middle school is in tier one, and Grand Marsh is in tier one, Adams French Bell Men truth reached tier one fidelity this year, so next year they will be trained as a tier two school, the middle school and Grand Marsh are still working on reaching tier one with fidelity, so they do have fidelity measures that they work on every year, uh, within their school district themselves, so that is schools themselves.
All right, my name is Evelyn Katke, I'm the middle school counselor. All right, so tier one, tier one is expectations, rules, words, lessons that every student gets, and that are successful for most of our students. All right, so you'll see under the definition, it's three to five school-wide expectations. Uh, so actually, if you flip to the next slide, just for a moment, all right, so we have different expectations at different schools, so at the middle school, we're about be safe, be responsible, and be respectful, the elementary added be friendly, hence there, those are their signs, all right, another expectation is voice level, all right, so at the middle school, sometimes you'll see a student, it means zero, all right, we would like their voice level zero, we're getting their attention. All right, one is whisper, four is outside, he is not too lonely, right, you flip back. Sorry. All right, so those are our expectations, and then other expectations are rules, for example, we have rules for different areas of the building, so for the hallways, we want you to walk in the hallways, all right, because it's safer to walk than to run, right? At lunchtime, we want students to wipe down the table before they go out to eat, all right, so those are kind of the rules under the expectations, all right, how do they know what the expectations are and the rules? We teach, and we pre-correct, all right, so through cool tools, behavior lesson plans, we do a lot of direct instruction, so at the beginning of a school year, we teach them, this is how you leave a fire drill, all right, these are the expectations at the lunchroom, this is how you go into a classroom and take your seat. All right, then we also have in-the-moment reminders, all right, sometimes we forget the rules, sometimes we just have to run down the hallway, we're so excited to be at school, all right, so we, we refine them, okay, we, we walk in the hallway, let's try it again. All right, we also model and practice, so the adults practice the expectations, so we model it, and then the students practice what we teach, all right, and we acknowledge that they're being safe, and respectful, and responsible, and friendly, all right, and we acknowledge that in a variety of different ways, so at the elementary, they get ICU tickets, all right, so ICU being responsible, respectful, friendly, at the middle school, we give them pride slips, all right, and then they collect those pride slips, some students just love to hang them in their locker, I got a pride slip, or take them home and show their parents, all right, they can also turn them into their homeroom teachers, and we run homeroom challenges where they can get treats, all right, we do celebrations, um, at the middle school, they have earned five thousand, we're having a school-wide challenge, five thousand pride slips already, they get a half hour free time during homeroom, they're on their way to earning ten thousand pride slips, where they will get a half day, a fun day, where we have a bunch of different activities already planned. Um, and they do similar things at the elementary.
At the elementary school, we'll have an end-of-the-year school-wide celebration of inflatables, right now, the students are having a kindness challenge, and so by being kind, they're doing a little kindness bingo, and when they get a bingo, they get actually a fast pass, that's gonna get them to the front of the line when we go to our playful day at the gym, so just some positive ways to reinforce being kind and having those expectations.
So the beginning, we reinforce, we reinforce, we give lots and lots and lots of pride tickets, all right, then it becomes more intermittent, all right, because we want them to show this behavior without maybe the expectation that they're gonna get a pride slip at every time, all right, we're encouraging the behavior. All right, um, both school celebrations, we do assemblies, I just wanna point out, some of our teachers have a, um, list of things that students can buy with their pride slips, our sixth grade ELA teacher, the students worked really hard, and they earned a hamster, a class pet, we got a hamster, he was great until he had babies. So they only have three hamsters. And then, we do re- reteach, because sometimes students forget, a month ago, I don't know why, they all just suddenly forgot how to wipe the tables after they ate lunch, so we re-taught that, or lately, it's been somewhat running in the hallways, uh, or trying to ride their scooters in the hallways, right, do they know they're not supposed to do that? Yes, all right, but kids get excited, and sometimes they just forget, so they have to be reminded, and we reteach them.
We still have two slides. So after we've done the school-wide teaching of rules, sometimes we recognize that we need a school-wide intervention, that again, tier one is everybody in the entire school, so, uh, last year at AFE, we noticed that bullying became a really fun word to use, and everybody in the entire school was getting bullied pretty much, so, we realized that we needed to stop overusing that word, and instead of worrying about bullying, we were just trying to, um, problem solve behaviors. So this was an example of a school-wide intervention that we actually had our Expect Respect Club, which is a group of, uh, students that leads us with some assemblies, they actually came and taught at the assembly, three ways to solve a problem are to say to stop, if that doesn't work, you walk away, and if that doesn't work, then you go and talk to a teacher, an adult, you find somebody. Um, the Expect Respect Club actually went to individual classrooms, they went through, kind of modeled the activities, stop, walk, and talk, we got that language going, and then the following month, the next assembly, we came back and taught what to do if you happened to maybe be the person being told to stop, maybe the pseudo-bully, that you should be stopping whenever you were asked to stop, breathe, take some deep breaths, and leave, and follow along with that, so we were trying to teach these catchphrases to teach kids how to solve their own problems, so that things were starting to clear up, and then this is one thing that we've maintained through this school year, and it's just become commonplace language, how to solve problems, so, uh, all adults at our school are using that vocabulary, out in the playground, in the lunchroom, uh, our parent professionals, our, all of our staff, so that's one of those interventions, and sometimes, an intervention isn't enough, and we need to go to what we call an ODR, which is an office discipline referral, uh, district-wide, that's what we use for that vocabulary, this is just a way for us to track data, um, when we look at this, we have a system to be able to input all this data, and it helps us look for trends, um, whether it's days of the week that we're having issues, whether it's problem spots in the school, whether it's the playground or the cafeteria, um, certain grade levels, we look for trends and how to address that behavior. From here, we can also look at pulling student groups to reteach behavior or reinforce expectations, we can identify staff members that are, um, putting in a lot of office discipline referrals to see if perhaps we can support them in some other ways, and sometimes we look for the student data that is trending from month to month, and find out that we need to maybe take them to the next level, which would be tier two.
So, um, Russia Creek, oh, I'm Kelsey Colly, I teach fifth grade at Russia Creek Elementary. Um, Russia Creek reached tier two fidelity two years ago.
Right.
Oh, sorry. Uh, we reached tier two fidelity two years ago, so Erica Rattle, one of our elementary school's social worker, and I, um, have gone to four different trainings, and every time I heard something new about tier two, we come back and kind of piloted, piloted it at Russia Creek, to kind of come up with a plan that all the schools can use for tier two, um, so tier two is kids that are, everyone's getting that universal support at tier one, so students that aren't being successful there, then are referred to tier two through the data tracking of the ODRs. Do you wanna? Oh, next one. So, um, our first intervention for students that aren't being successful at tier one is a check-in, check-out program, um, kids that have had two or more ODRs in a month in a similar behavior, so say, um, two physical contact issues throughout the year, um, we then take a look at their data, and we match them up with an adult, um, to do a check-in in the morning and a check-out in the afternoon with, these are kids that, um, uh, are looking for some adult attention, and just that, someone to talk to, someone to make sure that, uh, someone to look up, or look up to and make sure that, um, they're kind of checking in with you, so every morning, your check-in person finds you, and just gives you a little pep talk in the morning, and in the afternoon, they find you and do a little, um, check-out pep talk, uh, we try to keep it very positive, um, and then the classroom teachers are tracking, um, data on the kids, um, on be safe, be respectful, and be responsible, and then we're monitoring those sheets, um, for two weeks at a time, and we're looking to see if kids are making progress in the classroom, and it decreased, um, office discipline referrals. At Russia Creek, we just looked at our data tonight, actually, um, and fifty percent of our students in the last six weeks have made, have hit that eighty percent mark, so it's been very successful so far at our school.
So the next area that we're gonna talk about is those tier three services, I've talked to you a little bit about that this year, but if you wanna have a look, this is what we refer to as our school-based mental health providers.
This is what we refer to as our school-based mental health providers. So we do have our in-house people services team, our school counselors, school social workers, school psychologists, school nurse often following this realm. And we have shown you some data previously on how often they are being used. And we also have those integrated behavioral health providers. So if you're not familiar with this, what we have, we have five different agencies coming into our district that are certified for outpatient mental health right here at our school. So they're actually able to hold state in right here, certify our school sites, and not remove our students from the school buildings. The services they're providing, individual therapy. We've recently had some students and families engaged in family therapy sessions right here at school. They are providing group counseling and also AODA services. And we just found out that our most recent provider is actually able to provide individual AODA counseling now on our school site, so that is new for us. The providers that we have here, Adams County Health and Human Services sends a therapist here three days a week. This is pretty new, all the way across our state, to have a health and human service agency jump on board with us. They are very busy people, and it is phenomenal to have somebody there, right here in our school, working with our kids, being able to communicate there and communicate with us. That individual crosses all levels, so one day elementary, one day middle school, one day high school. They are also running groups for us at the high school, specifically male groups, predominantly a group that does not often get served. We have compass counseling here, three therapists, three and a half days. So again, they're spanning all levels depending upon the therapist. Central Wisconsin Counseling, we have two therapists coming for a day and a half, and they are at the middle school, high school level. And then Pine Valley Integrated is our newest. They are bringing two therapists here, four days a week, two for each individual. And they are spanning, so they have one therapist doing elementary, middle school, and one therapist doing middle school, high school, so they can continue with those students during that transition time. The one that is not listed here, we do again have an individual therapist serving Grand Marsh, but she is volunteering her services for us at this time. And then you heard the ladies talk a lot about data. The data tracking system they're talking about that we use at this time is called Swiss. Swiss has done a phenomenal job for us so far, but in the process of looking for another universal screener. So we have the opportunity to screen all of our students for mental health at the beginning of the year. In response to that, we were looking as a district, how do we make that happen? And we found another system called Review 360. Review 360, as Barbie likes to call it, is Swiss on steroids. So it provides all the communication tools for us that we have been looking for. It will actually provide, this team of individuals is working so hard to make sure they're getting interventions out to teachers, specific to students, students that are falling into tier-two. This system will actually kick interventions out to individual teachers and provide them with professional development based upon the students' needs and the student data that's coming into the system. So we are really excited to roll that out. And our, obviously, our end goal is to reduce the non-ODRs over time. That is PBIS in a nutshell. Do you have any questions for any of us?
Do you currently have any statistics on reductions?
I mean... Yes, I do, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. This is what I can tell you. We track the ODR specifically for the elementary and secondary school counseling grants. What we have noticed with the office disciplinary referrals, we wanted the numbers to go down, but our teachers started to use it as a tracking tool to find out what's actually happening in their classroom. So our numbers went up. It was really what we wanted to happen, we wanted to know what was happening, but we're not at the point where they're going to start reducing it. We're still watching and monitoring and finding what day of the week, is it happening on the playground? Is it specific grade levels? Can we support that teacher? So those numbers are increasing. This new system, Review 360, allows us to differentiate between an incident and an actual referral, meaning are you tracking something in your classroom so that you can monitor what's going on as an instructor? That would be listed as an incident. If it's an actual referral and you want it to go out to the principal, it will be tracked separately. And I think that'll provide us with a little better data following here.
Is the tier-one, which seems very heavy on elementary because you're doing the teaching, is it reinforced on the high school level?
High school does not fall in part of this PBIS system. When the district entered into PBIS, the high school did not enter into it at the same time. So we run PBIS just at elementary and middle school levels.
But they get the rest of the integrated behavioral health services?
They absolutely do. And I did talk a little bit about some of the curriculums that are coming in. So signs of suicide, that's still that tier-one intervention is offered at the high school. It's not that they don't receive any services, they just don't use this particular model at the high school.
Do you have a question for me? Thank you. Fine Arts Center report.
I'm going to use by PBS standards my number-three presenter's voice. If you want me to leave, you give me the zero for that. Knock the door, okay? Again, thanks for giving me a couple of minutes of your time. Again, I'm Tom Watzlo, director over at the Fine Arts Center. It was a good year for us. Some things are easy to put into a report, you know? So again, I can tell you, even though I spent probably $20,000 more than my budget, I was actually under budget because of the foundation donated $25,000 for improvements. Out of that $25,000, you know, we upgraded lighting, we upgraded sound, upgraded, made some improvements in the green room, some improvements in the ticket booth. I think people aren't really sure how much some of that stuff costs in the Fine Arts Center. One light fixture, LED light fixture alone is really basically $2,000. You have to piece it together, you don't even get a card, you have to get the card to put on the lights, put in there. So that stuff's, you know, it's expensive. That's, the foundation's help in bringing events in is just incredible. Again, I get a huge amount of support from a lot of people here, you know, from, you know, Ronnie and Mary Jo, and Donna, and Bob, I wouldn't forget Bob, Vicky, and Jenny, and Kevin, and Brian, and Darlene and the foundation. That's really how it works, everybody's super helpful, right? You know, and I see you guys sitting at show after show after show in the audience, and that's important too. Some things are easy to put into a report, you know, it's like to put budget stuff in there. Some things aren't so easy to put in, you know, like things when the Badger Band was in there and the kids are lined up, they're ready to go in there and start playing, and you can hear them talking, and they're just saying, "Wow, this is really a nice facility," you know? And then the students go, like, "Yeah, I think my high school was built back in World War II times," you know? You know, so you really enjoy it. You can't put in things like when Cat Perkins comes in, and she speaks to the middle school kids, and then she speaks to the high school kids, and then at night when she's signing autograph after autograph, and, you know, those kids are so impressed, you know? And I know when Crystal brings in Rise Together and the impact of that mental health function, and Douglas Darby saying, "Look at the triarts in my arms," you know? It's powerful stuff in there, so, you know? And then you got some, huh, silly stuff like Must Go On Nuts, so, you know? I don't know if you have any questions at all? You know, we have a couple of projects coming up. We're going to re-secur the sound baffles that are on the side of the Fine Arts Center. I don't know, Kevin, if you wanted to jump in on that? But really, they're up there, kind of, I call them furry strips, you know? And they're, they're put in there kind of with staples, and we're going to redo that. That's one of the projects coming up. We just recoded the floor. Aside from that, you know, maintenance-wise, things pretty quiet over there. If you guys have any questions? I haven't seen the zero go up, that's good, you know? But maybe I got one coming soon, I don't know. No, it's been a good year. Again, the rentals have gone up, and we have a commitment from Ravita Dance Studio. They were in there with a Nutcracker as our December show. They're coming back in June, they are also coming back in December. So again, that was one of our larger rentals, close to $2,000 renting to them. You know, the impact too is that when they come in, in their, you know, the first couple of days, they're doing set building and things like that. So, you know, they're going over to Ace Hardware, buying stuff, and they're stopping at Quick Trip and Subway. And, you know, when we bring Must Go On Nuts in, they're getting rooms down at the, wherever they got them sat. So, you know, but there is an impact on the community that we don't often see. You know, as far as how it gets used, you know, Doug Clark's in there with students, helping teach them. I think they're going to hire one, Joe, I forget his last name, but, you know, him and Doug get in there. Doug is, if you were wanting to be in flight, you'd call him Fussy, but I tell you, I love the guy because he, he'll take care of anything, you know? After prom, we had a little glitch with some double-sided tape on the floor, and boy, he's in there. Above would be on the call of duty and making sure it looked sharp for the Badger Band the next day. It's like I say, you can't have a place like that run without allowing a lot of support, and I sure appreciate it. So, any questions?
Thank you, Tom. Safe schools grant update.
If the board recalls, we spring St. Louis, Wisconsin, passing the Safe Schools Grant, which they are going to distribute $100 million throughout all schools in Wisconsin, private, public, didn't matter. Their goal is to make the schools safe. And I've updated the board a couple of times in the weekly updates. The best thing I can say is, the devil is in the details with this grant. When we first received this grant, we talked to that administrative team and said, "Oh, we can get this and that, this and that, and these things will really help us secure our buildings." Well, as we read through the grant and understand the complexity of the grant, one thing that comes to mind, this is not a Department of Public Instruction grant, this is a Department of Justice grant. They may have listened to the DPI, they may have listened to schools, they may have listened to educators. They didn't apply any of that in their grant. There are, coming out of this, there are two things that you have to do first at the school with every building. One is to have a bullet film on your entryways in the glass, and then also locks on every door, especially inside door, interior doors, so they can be locked from the inside. Those are our major projects. And once you get done with those projects and get all of the other requirements with the plans and submitting and working with your local law enforcement, then you can apply for what we thought we would be adequate right away. And as these things mount, and just kind of imagine in your head, I believe it's 30,000, they did be up per school, so I'm sorry, per building. And if you go into our middle school, your building has to be completely done. So the film on the windows and the entryway, not going to be that big of an expense. But if you have to change out every core on every door, that's going to chew up a lot of that money. So that's what we're finding out. This is a very elaborate and complex grant. We are doing our due diligence, we're going to meet that deadline somehow. But I just wanted to quiet the anticipation that we would get all of this stuff that we thought would be, if you're going to give $100 million to schools, maybe you should let the schools decide, you know, a little more weight. Let's get to that.
So what you're saying is, we have to go after replacing the door, adding the inside door locks. For all the buildings, for all children's. How much is that coming to?
Well, that's a lot of figuring to do. We're in the process of trying to figure that. And another, the money that they allot for that, it may cost more than that. So the district may end up having to put money into the project. As I stated, I think when we first reviewed it, and they didn't ask me for good reason, but if they would've, I would've supported the idea of, take $100 per student in your school, do what you need in your school for a safer school, then hand in the receipts when you're done, they approve it, then... This way it is a little more difficult.
What were the projects you had hoped to accomplish if you had to do that?
The one that kept rising to the top would be a state-of-the-art video surveillance system. We have secure entries, they air buzz in, so we're pretty good there. But that surveillance, not only would it help with one of these tragic events as far as, you know, recording it and finding out how exactly it happened, but those surveillance systems do a tremendous amount of prevention. As people know, they're on camera. When people are visiting our buildings, when our students are in buildings, the camera does a nice job of telling the truth.
Any other questions? Thank you. Building ground transportation report.
I just got a little short thing here. Piling the original hospital wire last week as our temporary, as some of the rest is, hopefully we'll see it up. See it offer, I am soon. The other thing what I did do was I went to Wisconsin River Power Company. We've got four properties that right now, if we stopped forestry projects on them, they revert back to the power company. Since we were in the quick-playing business here a while back, I thought, why not get all the properties cleared up? That way in the future, nobody has to deal with any of that anymore. It's 187 acres, there's three 40s, and then a 67-acre piece. One of the 40s is right across from the company park, so there is some value. And down the line, if you ever got in trouble, you'd have a way to possibly keep the doors a little bit so well longer. I thought it was very important to get that cleared up. And I've got a gal that's working, going to be really well on this, so hopefully we can email back and forth. I even stopped back here Friday about 4:30 to keep this ball rolling, so it's looking good. So hopefully we have an answer for you by the next board meeting, and you'll have some nice property to maybe farm or open a campground, or you'll have all kinds of options rather than just forestry. And then the other thing too down the line is you've got a lot of, a lot of trees, you know what I mean? If a guy ever had to sell, you could take 50% of the trees off that, you know what I mean? And you'll bring the property, you're between $41.50 per 40, and then you have lease property to sell.
Thank you, Kevin. New business bills, give your motion.
I approve to approve general fund checks number 78215 through 78381, and ACH checks number 800265 through 800294, and 2189 through 2211 totaling $651,489.75. And the activity fund checks number 30273 through 30295, and 1107 totaling $160,019 for the month of April. I will say that.
Motion made by General Counsel, by Jim, to approve general funds check 78215 through 78381, ACH checks number 800265 through 800294, and 2189 through 2211 totaling $651,489.75. Activity funds checks number 30273 through 30295, and 1107 totaling $18,160.19 for the month of April. Discussion. Here now, we'll start this whole, Kevin.
I'm staying.
Jim.
Yes.
Brenda.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Jack.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Larry.
I'm staying.
And my board is yes. It says 702 extensions. Approval of Roman Advocacy for 2018, 2019 school year.
We have, if you want to click on that link, there are a few, I'm going to click on myself. 13 new students opening, open enrolling into the district? New students, so that's not including students that were open enrollment years prior. And 34 new students that are opening enrollment out of the district. We did have to look at denying two students' open enrollment because if you remember, in January, we set our cap for a number of special ed students. And if we were to take on more of the students that we talked about, we would've had to actually hire more staff. So that's why back in January, we didn't even know these kids were going to be applying. We set a cap of the number of students that was going to take in to particular programs.
The 34 new ones that are leaving the district, do we ever do like a, almost like an extra interview with them? Contact them and ask them why? Did Kelly do that, or no?
I don't know why not, I don't know if it's legal, I don't know why not. I've never done it, not saying that I can't.
Did you have a feeling about why they sat here?
Well, when we have looked at their addresses before, we have looked at it in their... Well, when we have looked at their addresses before, we have looked at it in their outline part of the district. For this thirty-four, no, I didn't look to see where their addresses were. But you can see where they are open enrolling to. So, just by looking to see where they're open enrolling to, you can see a majority are to Westfield, the Dells, just neighboring districts. So, I'm sure looking at addresses, we could infer even that. Is that something the board would like me to look into?
Yes, I would.
Please.
Barring that I can do that?
Yeah.
I would go ahead and do it.
Well, the address for all these people, we could either sign a modifier or something or and ask them if they choose to fill out some of that.
I can do that. Do you have any other questions?
With that, I look for a motion.
I move to approve open enrollment request as presented by administration for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year.
I'll second.
Motion made by Tim, second by Joanne to approve the open enrollment request as presented by administration for two thousand nineteen, two thousand nineteen school year. Discussion. Here now, we'll start this whole, Jim.
Yes.
Brenda. Jeff.
Yes.
Kat.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Jim? I'm sorry. And I will just pass this one here. Two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen support staff handbook.
So, for our newer board members, we have two large groups of employees, support staff and professional staff. And each year, July first to June thirtieth, we have to have a handbook that gives us some rules and regulations as we proceed through the year. So, the process is, by that June thirtieth date, we'd like to have handbook in place for the next year. As I've alluded to in a couple of updates, the first step was to meet with my leadership team, review the handbooks, format them. Second step was to meet with each group of staff separately, listen to their input, see what they were interested in, see what things I was on, see what things I was off on. Took that and then it was to forward it to legal review. There are some things that kind of slipped through the cracks and we just need to address. There are other things where laws change and that's where the legal review comes in and says, yep, can do this and we can do that. And then the last step was to present it back to these groups and that happened last week. So, now I have in front of you an offering for a support staff handbook that we're going to begin with and just a kind of a code, new language is in green and then language that is being struck out, that is being eliminated, that is struck through. So, a couple of things, as we go through this, I'll kind of highlight. There were some times where we had the exact same topic in the support staff and the professional staff, but different language. So, I just copied the language that I felt was a better representative of our practice and applied it in both. There's a couple of instances like that. There is language that just needed cleaned up a little bit and a couple of new items to go through. So, I thought it would be best if I will try and follow along on the big screen and as we scroll down, I'm going to have to go bifocals, not bifocal and get to something green and then find that on the bottom of where is that page? So, that greenness in language, and this is an idea that I brought forth. It is a popular item in other districts that I've been in that I've seen and that is a new category of employee. We currently don't have anyone in this category. But it is an eleven-month employee. An employee who, for example, during the month of July wouldn't work. And to have that, so then we can consider that. As we progress into the future, maybe this will fit some of our positions that we have.
It needs to be cleaned up in a manner.
How so?
For a eleven months. Full-time basis for eleven months. Or and eleven months, not eight eleven months.
Got it. Mary Joanne, you taking note of that?
I can't hear. Terminally, it should be full-time basis for eleven months, not eight eleven months. Or and eleven months, period. Or just take other ones. Okay. So, we currently do not have anybody?
No. Nope.
Jim, who potentially could be in this category?
Well, we have, let's say, we have food service positions, they wouldn't be, but we have secretary of positions that are here around. And as we consolidate and as our numbers shrink, we want to have that flexibility. Propose that. There might be some custodial positions. But it's, nobody is targeting right now. It's just the idea of if it's there, we can take advantage of potential.
If you decide to look at someone and reduce them to eleven months, would they have to go through any interview process? No, you would just look at their?
It'd be more of an awareness process, awareness process as we go through it.
Okay.
And you have to look at it as the board. If there isn't twelve months of labor, we need to work.
Sure. I'm just saying, if you're not going to create a position where that person would actually have to go and interview that their own physician.
No, no, that's like working at university. We won't do that.
Okay, thank you.
Do we, I mean, any event that were to happen, we hire an eleven-month employee, would we still provide full-time benefits?
Yes.
I know it's just said full-time, but it's defined as four weeks. Each week, only two, they would work.
Yeah, but also look at our paraprofessionals that work nine months. They still receive full-time.
I thought it was one of the kind of [inaudible 00:11:38].
So, if you had paraprofessional who works all year and then they work with a custodian in the summertime, that's, they're working a lot of time, but it's not a lot of more position. This is a separate, this is a [inaudible 00:11:57].
Yeah, when we do this, we will return to the job description. Part of the job description will delineate this as an eleven-month.
Okay. Would you look at this position as, it could be a year-round, but there is a break, an interim two-week here, an interim two-week here, because those are not very busy.
No, I don't think that would be fair to the employee.
Do it a whole month. Got it.
I think if you have this position you're recruiting for, that person needs to know. Like, my past experiences are in the month of July. These are positions where they just, the work isn't there for them. Now, some people, that's an attractive thing to have. Work all year except July. We go then to the top of page three, where we're talking discrimination and harassment policy. This had a lot of differences from support to professional and so this is not the same in both handles. And you can see, starting there at the bottom half of page three, the threatening behavior. All of that is covered in discrimination and harassment policy. So, that would be an example of repeated language that is no longer. I believe the next alteration is on page six. Am I correct? Outside activities of staff. That is a legal statement to demand that somebody avoid your work on First Amendment of Rights Day. But you can say they should be aware of it and still be compliant. So, now what we have to do is, if this is approved, the next time we have a policy meeting, you'll see that policy forty-two thirty-one will be brought up to match this one. At the top of page eight, this new language that if administration determines a vacancy exists.
Oops, I'm on the page eight.
Under job posting?
What it says is, oops, there was a problem loading this page.
Oh, refresh.
Go ahead, I can just check.
And then halfway down that page, you'll see the term when necessary is struck. And that is legal advice, who determines when necessary is. So, you still have the same impact of the language without those words. So, just write the words. Resignations. This is one of those examples of having different numbers throughout the same handbook. What we decided was make it fifteen days across the board. Some groups were ten, some were fifteen, one group was thirty. Fifteen is three working weeks, plenty enough, plenty enough time for each side to have that separation. And what really brought my attention to this was our confidential positions that required a thirty-day notice, which I think would be difficult for an employee, let's say they're getting that other job. How are you going to tell the other job, no, 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 I can't work thirty days? They want you probably two weeks or three weeks max.
Remind me again, who's confidential?
That would be, for example, Mary Joanne.
Okay.
And then at the bottom of page eight, professional staff meetings, this came out of the discussion with the staff that her professionals would like to be recognized for their time when they are able to retain their say. And under classification schedule adjustments, numbers two and three, they recognize what we currently are doing. And remember, when we hold salary out of supplements, this is then making that whole.
Are cooks no longer transporting food places? Is that why that is?
Well, it is something that was included for those. There was one cook that was doing it.
Yep.
And it's not a mandatory part of their job anymore. I believe it's more as needed at times, if I'm speaking correctly. Whereas in the past, when this was in there, I believe it was something that every day that person had to get the computer phone going.
Okay. Summer school, when they transport the food to those sites?
They're paid hourly wage now. That's it.
And then the holidays. The correct way to recognize that date is the Friday of fourteenth. And you'll see at the top of page ten, that is some strike-through language. Back to that constant fifteen or consistent fifteen days for when employee resigns. At the bottom of page ten, benefit eligible, just was confusing language. So, now it's more accurate, regular, full-time. And then at the top of page eleven, this is new language and this is something that our support staff hasn't had. And that is dental insurance, the same that our professional staff has. The staff made that recommendation when we met with them. I went back and spoke with the business office, we priced it out and it was something that we can afford to do as a district. And on page eleven, there's a strikeout just because that sentence is unneeded. It says the same thing that the title of the paragraph says, an unused weekly payout. The new language health savings account, it's a practice this district has had, but it isn't included in the handbook. And I felt once it's a practice that we're going to be using into the foreseeable future. So, let's place it in the handbook so that it's recorded.
Is this dental insurance going back to that? It's going to be reviewed on a yearly basis to see if we can afford it every year?
Yeah, that was part of our projections. You see, well, is it one-year, two-year? We are a self-insured dental program and it's time to start using some of that self-insure that's been built up.
Okay. Thank you.
Then on page twelve, under sick leave, you can see where the eleven-month employee is addressed there. Also, under bereavement leave of, I reviewed all of the different categories or relations that somebody could go on bereavement leave for and it struck me that niece and nephew weren't included, whereas everything else was. The staff felt the same way.
Hey, Jim. Quick question, sorry about that. Page eleven, go back to the HSA. Is that like at the discretion of the employer contributions or is that, you know, so the guidelines for dissemination program are at the discretion of this thing? Is that just going to use the?
What that allows us to do is currently you have that HSA to help with our large deduct. Well, each year, when the insurance companies come in and bid us out, those large deductibles are going to keep getting up. So, this gives us the flexibility as a district to say, if that deductible goes up a ton, maybe we need to dedicate more into that health savings account. It just gives us the flexibility to adjust as that practice adjusts.
And then one more question. How do I make this thing work? You said refresh.
Refresh. You're hitting the oops, try it again. Just refresh your screen.
Yeah, the black hole. I don't know where it.
Refresh is the air that turns around like that.
Sorry.
Thanks for going back to the beginning.
On page thirteen, that is an example of where each handbook had its address. I chose the language from the professional handbook, copied, pasted into this one, so then they're mirrored. For the unpaid people of absence. Nothing is changing in our approach on that, just putting language through it. On page fourteen, lunch breaks, just to make sure that it's a duty-free lunch period. On page sixteen, under drug and alcohol use, added the category of or under the influence of. And on page seventeen, the support staff had twelve of those following uses and the professional staff had thirteen, so I just made a copy of the thirteen number of the book. And then at the bottom part of Page Nineteen, employee conduct and disciplinary action. Our support staff are at-will employees. And what that means is there aren't categories. But yet, in our handbook, there were categories. There was a probationary employee and a non-probationary employee. Where it really comes to a head is at the top of Page Twenty, under number one, where it states, a probationary employee may be disciplined or terminated from employment by the district at its sole discretion. Such discipline or termination shall not be subject to grievance procedure in this handbook. That language panics us, that's wrong. Once they're employed, they have a right to that grievance procedure. That is a state statute. So you have at-will employees that are protected at the state statute level with that grievance process. Therefore, there is no such thing as probationary or non-probationary. That would be language that has carried over from when contracts were negotiated with you. It doesn't change any of our practices, it just makes them accurate. And I'd like to thank Mr. Babcock for giving me the oops, there was a problem loading this. I don't know if there are any other, are there any other changes to highlight? So you can also see, if you want to return to the agenda, the input, input one, input two, that was what the staff had offered up. You can see the items that I supported as district administrator and those items that I did not. One thing I would like to draw attention to, that isn't a handbook issue, but did come up with the support staff. And that is, we would have, and I did a product earlier, we have members of our paraprofessional staff that then during the summer join our custodial staff. And anybody who did that during the summer was paid at eleven dollars per hour, which is what we pay our substitutes, eleven dollars per hour. And reviewing it, reviewing the numbers with the business office, what we're deciding to do there is whatever the base wage for that position is, is what the summer employment will be paid. For example, if you have somebody in food service, and during the summer they are working food service, they are paid at the base wage for food service, which is an increase from eleven. We have paraprofessionals that work as custodians. They were getting eleven per hour. Now they'll be getting with the base wage for custodians, which I believe is fourteen. Another example would be a paraprofessional during the school year, who's a paraprofessional during summer school. They would get base wage for a paraprofessional there. It's not a handbook issue, but it was brought up. The other documents that were brought up were brought to the board's attention last July, would be four employees of long standing in the district requesting to get those vacations back. And that's, that's an element also. There was another letter from an employee talking about, and I'm having a problem bringing it up myself, but I had proposed the first go-through that if, if a person was going to, what I wanted to eliminate was the ability for an employee to go to their supervisor and say, listen, if I work an extra hour here, an extra hour there, can I be Friday at one? My, my belief behind that is if students are in the building, we need to be in the building. In, in putting that out there, that conflicted with all the other things that a lot of our staff do. For example, this April, when we were plowing snow the entire weekend, that would have said, well, you can't do that. So that was a bad suggestion by me. So that was just eliminated, out of the, the practice is still under the belief with administration, let's keep our people in front of our students, our students are here. But allowing those supervisors and those employees that flexibility to do what they need to do for school to achieve. Are there any questions?
Have you responded to those letters that we're seeing in front of us?
Yes. That came out in the meeting, two second questions.
Are you going to fill us in on the responses?
I'm confused.
Well, one letter that I'm reading said, I would like to understand the rationale for the reduction of that.
Well, that's a question to the board directly. And the board can act as they see fit with that. What I'm presenting to you is the handbook in process.
Okay. That was done like two years ago, three years ago?
A little longer than that.
Longer than that? What, what was done? The decreasing vacation?
He wrote the handbook, so I don't know.
Do you know the logic behind the reduction in benefits at that time?
I think Rick Woski did it at the time, and his thing was to administer to everybody just like twenty days. And that's how he, that's how he felt. Right, maybe, is that what's up?
Yeah, that's what it was.
Just to have some consistency.
No, consistency through all the history.
Okay, the letter I'm looking at said, a couple of years ago, the vacation day language was changed in the employee handbook to honor those individuals that we see before us. And all of a sudden, that changed. So they asked us to please reconsider it. They want to reinstate the language pertaining to the six weeks. And at best, give an explanation. So what I'm trying to get at, was there an explanation given? And can you share that with us? If you're just saying explanation is the handbook, even though these people have worked forty years and plus, and that just, we've decided to cut off two out of their six week vacations, even though they have been years at it. That's where I'm at, I'm very confused about how this is evolving.
Well, I cannot speak to prior to July first. So I'm, I'm just, I am presenting to you this handbook. And with that, I feel that four weeks is a good standard for the district. And that's where I'm standing at. I can't answer what was required for her reason to. I don't know.
I can't, I, I, I disagree. I believe that someone that's been here for that long has the merit and has earned their vacation based on our previous handbook. And for some reason, it was, we took it away, I don't, I don't get it, I don't understand. You don't really have a monetary gain, granted you don't have them working at the time for the return of vacation, but they've had that for a very, very long time. I'm just trying to put myself in their shoes where, you know, family planning trips, things like that, trying to avoid the busy time of the school year to get maybe your vacations in. Whatever, whatever the reason or how you use it, but to reduce it, to me, it's just not right.
I agree with that, because I think, I, I think we should honor something that's been going on in a contract, that's not been abused. Like many other things that are grandfathered in, in everyday life. You know, things that have existed before, that were working. Dedicated employees serving these districts for forty plus years to all of a sudden, remove two out of their six weeks that they have been having, I think that is wrong. I think from this moment on, when we're looking at vacation days, we will look at the handbook and make sure with new hire release, that we give them a look. But I do believe these four individuals have been very dedicated and that we should not remove something that has been an ongoing reward for their dedication.
I agree. They gave us this letter last year, how many guys all voted yes last year on this?
We didn't vote yes, it was down on, remember? We didn't have a conversation much about this.
We have the letter, just like this, and we had the handbook in front of us, and we all voted yes.
The days were lost in two thousand fifteen.
Right.
Fifteen?
Two thousand fifteen was when the days were out, we lost. Or three years ago. And I think that the session then was, well, how, how do we grandfather these people at the four, when you've got maybe a couple coming up at twenty-seven, wasn't that part of the discussion? So there was kind of like, well, if we grandfathered these guys, and now this one, who's been twenty-seven years working, and we had several of those, well, I don't remember the exact years, several of those, well, where do we, do the grandfathering?
If you could have the grandfather, if you, if you make thirty years, you get two extra weeks vacation. You know, in a handbook, you only have, can't have more than four on vacation at the same time, I'd do it. And so, I mean, that's, you know, I understand you don't want all your, your key employees, your, you know, your thirty, forty-year-old employees to be off at the same time. But I think there's language in there that prevents that too. The discretion of the administrators allowing vacation to not coincide with three other, you know, key employees' vacations. But so grandfathering, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make it a grandfather, I'm like, if you make it for thirty years, you made it thirty years, you know, that's, that's why I'm not sure, which is my, my thoughts.
I look at, my government service is going on thirty-four years, and I only get twenty, I get twenty-five. And why don't we even get six weeks at that, at that time? Plus I get more sick leave than I incurred with it also. And I don't get professional days. So that's, that's quite a,
It's a difference, yeah.
But you know what I'm saying, so we're talking about a government entity just like that.
But it's more than, I guess.
Yeah, I understand it's more further, I'm just saying that's, that's the same situation.
But on the other hand, they did make a comparison with other businesses in the area. They were, that's the case.
Okay, but one of the comparisons, I'm not, they have, one of the comparisons is not vacation basis. I mean, you can use a day, you just get that many days and then use it for whatever.
Personal day.
Pay time.
PTO.
Well, twenty-five days and bonus, twenty-five days, twenty-seven days, thirty days.
Kathy, I would tell you that LA Quotid only has PTO, that includes their sick time.
So that one is not correct.
That is not correct.
So, so they, they get, that half of them is for, for holidays as well. Some of the PTOs even include holiday. So they get just that many, period, that, they don't get sick days or vacation or others, that's, that's just.
My employees have six weeks off.
A per month.
I think it's more than. But I, I guess, to, to me, it's not necessarily how much it's, you know, we remove it from them, that's kind of a, a barrier, I think, that I don't necessarily agree with. You know, if they had it, and all of a sudden we remove it, but just those, that level, we do. So no one else got a reduction of benefits except the ones that have been here long. And that's kind of, you know, I, I wouldn't.
Well, but they're asking us to reconsider this decision.
Correct.
And we can bring it up to reconsider. And, and do you agree by making a motion to reconsider the decision?
We do a couple of different ways, we either vote on the handbook the way it is written for the superintendent. We could make a motion and we include that into the handbook this year. We could make a separate motion to reconsider it, and if we pass it, I'm assuming that Jim would then put it in. So there's a couple of different ways.
So tell me, I currently, everybody's at one week?
When do vacation days is the?
After what period is that?
I don't believe, I can't speak to the support staff on. After how many years you're talking?
Yes, it's listed here, you, you start out with one, and then you get two, and then?
It's in the handbook.
There are eight. There it is. What page? Nineteen.
Ten, fifteen, twenty after fifteen. So do you want to add more category there? Or do you want to just approve these four? I guess that's what I'm looking for, a motion or something.
My feelings are, we need to honor what we have been doing in the past. These people have had six weeks, they are some of our most dedicated employees. We yank two weeks away from our limit. But from the standpoint of the support staff handbook, we then have a, a basis for determining vacation days from that point on. I just feel that this is done. And if we're working and try to pull this school district together, and really work together on employee morale, I think this is actually a good way to do it. I think it, it says that we honor our, our contracts that we've had in the past and continue to, until these people resign or retire.
You want to make a category, just put those four back.
I would, I would say if you're going to do that, you're going to put another line, and they're saying if you're going to be here for seven years to get those six days.
Yeah, I would do it. I said, I, I love all four, absolutely, and I appreciate it all. We can't just pull out those four, because now you're going to be taken off, the whole other group right in between here. So I don't think that we need, we should just jump into it, I think we need to look at for all, or nothing, and I'm, because I'm a signee, I don't want to just do it for.
For thirty years.
If I may provide a recommendation, I would have the board vote on the support staff handbook as presented. And then at the next board meeting, you can bring up this as a separate item. And put that, there are a lot of things that you are saying that we need to have accurate information behind. When you say, that's the only thing that was taken. Look district-wide after Act Ten. Look what was taken from our professional staff. So if that was, are you then opening up your possibility of those benefits coming back? So I think that there's an inlet of decisions that I don't believe you want to make right now. But given a month of preparation, you can make then an accurate decision.
With more data. And you'll provide that data.
I'll provide what you ask of me.
And that will be a, become effective even after the handbook's passed.
Well, handbook can be adjusted at each board meeting.
Intelligencism, it kind of is, it's a school year.
You asking the table out there, table open?
Yeah, we're saying, there's nothing to table. We're not in the council, we'll just put it, we'll put it on X, Y.
But then it's our responsibility to ask him for information to make this decision.
So is there a motion on the handbook?
I would note if you are making the motion, include that there is some formatting instead of, you don't want it print on the final copy.
You need to adopt it with changes made?
With changes.
Well, I'm making the motion that we adopt the support staff handbook with the additional changes made.
So you, Kathy? Most fair, Kathy, thank God, Rod, to approve the support staff handbook with changes made. Discussion. Here you go, Mr. Phil, print it.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Go in.
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Lana?
I'm staying.
Ken?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And my board just a pass of eight to zero to one. Moving on to professional staff handbook.
Same approach, this time with professional staff. So I believe it'd be wise to once again scroll through, hopefully it all loads up for us. Now, the first alteration would be on the introductory page, page one, just some repeat language. You can see where it is struck through under the disclaimer statement. That was just moved down under district expectations and then the line above it was struck through. Because they repeated themselves. At the top of page two, instead of working, it's contracted to work. That, that may sound to you like, well, that's a lawyer talking. Well, that's because that is a lawyer giving us those words. And then at the top of page three, discrimination and harassment policy, same thing as the support staff.
And will these compliance officers, well, at least that position, those will remain consistent? Director of People's Services in High School, Associate President?
Yes, and have changed. And you remember, there are things in policy that the district administrator, we changed this early on when we started through Miola, that I can go and make those adjustments. And we don't have to go through a review of the policy and all that because employees change.
Right.
So it, it may be a situation where one of these people says, I don't care to be a compliance officer. I may agree with that and then we'll have to reappoint someone. I can then go into that policy, change it. I wasn't put to you. I can go and change it. We don't have to go through that free money process.
Okay.
So the same thing would be a problem.
Thank you.
And then at the bottom of, of false information, just the end of the clearly possible termination. And towards the bottom of page five, instead of avoid or aware of, we talked about First Amendment rights. It's similar to these. At the, towards the bottom of page six, repeat language from the sentence above. So that is in struck. At the bottom of page seven, same thing as support staff, that an under-job posting administration term of vacancy exists. Excuse me, halfway through page eight, reduction in staff when necessary is an arbitrary term, so as determined by the board. Summer school at the bottom of page eight, that represents our current practice. It just wasn't, there wasn't language behind what we're doing. And then in district substitutions, that was something that new language brought in and then also matches what we're doing with our subs in the bottom there. On page, still on page nine, under master's pay, national board certification pay. That is in reaction to when we took the supplement category, put it into the, the base wages. We still have to recognize that, yes, the master's pay, the national board certification pay is reimbursed at the bottom. At the bottom of page 10, we have the health savings account, similar language to the support staff.
I have a question. I'm sorry, going back to when I read their, their comments. They were concerned about this in district substituting because at times they may go a week without getting their tech time. So was this answered by saying, well, you're gonna get twenty-two dollars an hour? Are they assigned? Are they, do they volunteer?
There are times where we are without subs and a teacher has to cover. So there are times where it is assigned. We do, we have layers of place to avoid that situation. That's not what we go into looking for.
Right.
But there are times where that is, we needed something to recognize that with the sub. And towards the bottom, there you see the, that's an elementary issue. For example, at, at Grant Marsh, if you have a third grade teacher that's absent and we're unable to give a sub, you have class full of third graders. So what they would do is divide them up into groups of four amongst all the other staff members. And there wasn't language that recognized that that person should be reimbursed for doing this. On page 11, this is the major change at the professional staff level. Our current practice is new staff members, once they complete one year of employment, professional staff, they receive one thousand dollars into a TSA. And remember back, their retirement was removed and this was a way to compensate for that. I am proposing in front of the board, instead of the first year getting that one thousand dollars and then we've had a problem with our staff leaving, how about we wait four years and instead of giving four thousand, we provide five thousand and then one thousand every year after? That increases the amount if they stay with us for four years, like your fifty-year. And it's kind of a longevity award to stick with us for four years. If you do that, instead of getting four thousand, you're getting five. But if you leave after year two or year three, the district does not have anything to do with that.
Are other school districts doing this?
I don't know where.
Okay. How does staff feel about that one?
The staff that were present nodded in agreement, like that makes sense. They, a lot of the discussion with the professional staff was they understand the burden of this turnover, one, two years, and then the staff number loses. So anything that we can do to maybe encourage that longevity, they support it.
So we're gonna try to spin it as a retention tool, right?
Yes. Any other questions about that? That is a significant change.
Do you think it'll affect hiring, hiring processes or, yeah, piece of processes, applicants possibly or?
I don't know. We'll have to wait and see.
I like the concept of retention, I'm just not sure it's... Yeah.
That's why I wanted to know, I mean, things come across from the mail and for board members to read about retention tools. And I just wondered if that was being utilized by anybody else. It's just a brand-new magazine that came from the school board and I haven't read it yet, you probably have, Ron. But it talks about retention of teachers and I'm wondering, you know, I need to sit down and read it, but I wondered if this, because we have talked about other incentives, you know, helping people settle in the community, how can you give them an incentive? If we indicate, not as punitive things, but it's an incentive to stay with us.
That's what the extract two fifteen were.
Further on page 12, under sick leave, that was just matching our current practices, the minimum of sixty minutes. And then recorded in fifteen-minute increments afterwards. At the bottom of page 12, at jury duty, that was language support staff had, that professional staff did not. Top of page 13, under personal leave, the request in writing, that's prior to our talent ed vehicle that we use to communicate with staff. They request electronic, but it doesn't have to be in writing. They still have to request it. It just goes through Skyward system and talent, I said talent, it should be Skyward, that's how it's requested.
Does the personal leave, remind me, to support staff, do they have up to three days to ask for a personal leave? Or is it longer? It's a little longer, but I could be wrong.
I'm not sure what it says in the handbook. But we can look. Any other board members on the answer? We'll unfold them.
The similar pages like twelve through twenty.
Does support staff have personal leave?
They can transfer two of their sick days into personally.
Right.
And it comes out of their sick leave.
I was wondering, they want, if you want it to be made in advance as much as possible, not less than three days. I was wondering, will this, this support staff?
There's, when they can plan ahead, it's great, but sometimes life throws a curveball and there needs to be some kind of understanding of life. Under bereavement leave, niece and nephew are included. District administrator under unpaid leave of absence, just a word that added to match the practice. On page 14, under standard work year, eliminating the ten professional development days to give the district flexibility. You have a one ninety-two. One hundred and seventy-six days, by putting ten, it just eliminates. So that's eliminated and then the, if you recall, we have one parent-teacher conference next year. One night of that for one episode of. If we go to page 15, you see faculty substitutions is completely struck through. That is because that was handled. That was another repeat language.
Can we go back to 14? On the top, first paragraph, district may require a physical prior to allowing employee return to work. Struck out the return to work.
Yep, that is hard to identify what a return to work physical would be. Whereas if it's a physical, then we have the leniency to say, make it act like it was worked for me. Our legal counsel did not know what a return to work physical looked like, but he knew what a physical was.
Oh, I see. I thought it was like a sort of... And so who's it's best?
Well, at least the district's. But it probably depends on the case. Page sixteen, drug and alcohol use added under the influence of. And then under, there's page nineteen, employee conduct disciplinary action, right at the top of page twenty. Full-time teachers, because that's what the state statute protects, full-time teachers. As we go to page twenty-two, I just eliminated all of the adoption dates. I'm not sure it has any bearing on the handbook. And then on to the athletics activities percentage of a schedule, starting page twenty-three. You can see where the BTEP coordinator, which was eliminated at the start of the year, replaced by the ed effectiveness coordinator and the community engagement coordinator. And then the one physician. Another one that's being eliminated is the ed educator effectiveness coach. The reason behind that being? That was new five years ago and we needed a lot of coaching for our staff. The need isn't there anymore. That is more input and developed into the mentoring process. And if you go further to page twenty-seven, a field trip that we approved earlier in the meeting as an advisor for educators' rising. And educators' rising is the effort to, at rural schools, recruit and promote their own students into education.
All right, I don't mean to be a strict word, but if I found that page sixteen, seems like our terminology for that, rather than a physical, would be a physician's release. What is our, what are our policies today? It seems like our policy stays up to date because what kind of physical do you have here off of? Mental health break.
Well, that's, I would say that gives us the leniency to prescribe. The district may require that physical prior to returning.
Would that word physical, I think, is what I was just saying, would that cover a mental health assessment to allow the employee to come back to work?
I don't know.
That's all I would apply it.
Tommy, is that something?
It seems like our, we have only these policies. It seems like our, our other policies say something about a physician's release. And that physicians can be at art expression, but giving just a level of...
That's, that's sound better, a physician's release.
Any other discussion? Mary Jo, can you make note of that? So that will be, if the board does move on this, that will be an accepted change.
Anybody else on that mean?
Especially with mental health issues, you're in here in all aspects of business and school. I think it was a good catch.
Is there a motion for the staff, for the professional staff handbook?
I will accept the professional staff handbook with accepted additions.
I'll sign that.
Most men, I can't think of my gender to accept the professional... Most men, Kathy, for my gender, to accept the professional staff handbook with accepted additions. Discussion.
Do we need to add 2018, 2019?
2018, 2019, it's clear.
Okay.
Here, no discussion, we'll start this one with Chuck.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Go in.
Yes.
Yes.
Lana?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes. Jim?
I'm staying.
Barbie?
Yes.
My vote is yes, it passes eight, zero, one, it's a motion. Reports to the board, Board of Education. Here you go.
I attended the top ten thing over in Westfield. It was well-known. I got, had got put on the stage and handed out awards and some of them over there. It was very well-known.
Wasn't it nice to be able to hand your son his?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna give mine his.
Personal note, my daughter accepted a teaching position at Meade Elementary tonight. So thanks, Gary, and Rocky, for the little bit of advice she gave me, so.
Appreciate it, congratulations. Up to me.
Anyone else? On the issue, anything from them?
Oh, they presented.
Let's start with Barbie. Ronnie? Charlie?
Here. Well, they leave it all to nothing. Well, at Rush Creek, there's a couple of things. First of all, I'm donating the shirt that staff will be wearing on Sunday, the twentieth, from one to three. The Cancuzzi and the pens are things that will be handed out. We've had some interest for that. On Friday, though, this is the caveat, on Friday, Mr. Goodie's gonna come out with some sort of cement smasher or something. And behind 1953, we think there is a time capsule that we are going to pull out, bring up for the students to see, kind of have it out available, and then again, that'll be available on Sunday. We seem to think that there was something built and put in there in 53, and then again, in the eighties. And then some of our classes, and we talked about it at our staff meeting tonight, we'll be adding some of those things and trinkets and things that would add to that for the history of it. So should be interesting. We'll find out what's in that time capsule. It'll be unveiled on Friday when we go behind. We'll figure out that time exactly when Mr. Goodie's available to come out and smash that cement or whatever we gotta do. And then find out what's in it. And kids are doing those things. So that is it. There are some other shirts online that you can get too, that some people have required about. And I know we are at the Fine Arts Center on Sunday also, at the high school. Maggie May Council will be going on at that same time. There's just scheduling and Mother's Day and end of the year graduation, bucking up for just things like that. So that's what's going on at Rush Creek. Grand Marsh, the student, Montel, I'll stop going on.
As we're winding down the school year, we're starting to gear up for our summer foods program. And then I'm not sure if people know that there's a woman that's doing free supper at Burton Morris for four more weeks for anyone. Kids, staff, from four to six, any families that wanna walk over to Burton Morris, hot dog and rotts. She just is extending the second harvest and doing this out of the goodness of her heart.
When, when does she do it?
It's on Fridays, from four to six, for anyone that gets over there.
Jan?
Nothing, thank you.
Ashley?
Nothing, thank you.
Chris?
Nothing at this time.
Nothing.
First of all, any else?
I will be leaving for Washington DC on Wednesday. I've been invited to SAMSA, who gives us our funding for Project Reare and the S.S.C.R. to speak, one of four people across the nation, about school-based mental health. So I'm very honored to travel there and serve as our district president.
You're not taking Barbie to see this guy?
I'm not.
Would like to invite all of you next Friday to our annual Memorial Day program. It starts at 9:30 at AFE. Bring some tissue, because every time the students sing, I cry like a baby. So you probably will too.
Have a call, anyone else?
Can I do one thing?
Yep, go ahead.
Also, on Sunday is the Snack Pack Golf Hour. So.
You can golf, we have a huge, awesome record prizes at the end of all three spots.
Yep, and so I'm gonna go to the Rush Creek thing and go make it back and do the, do the rattle. I'm gonna connect it.
With that, anything to play, Jim? With that, we'll consider issuing German code section of section 19.851F, considered financial, mental, social, personally issued or dispiriting data. A potential person's preliminary consideration, which is first no problem, or investigation charged against a potential person except for a pair of B-5s. Discuss the public's likelihood of a substantial adverse effect upon a reputation or any person referred to such issues or data involving problems or investigations to which complete discipline. Is there a motion? Jim? Ron?
Yes.
Discussion. We'll start this vote with Kathy.
Yes.
Go in.
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Lana?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
My vote is yes. Passes by zero. Do we want five minutes?